It's...
Not working.
Okay. Good evening. At 6:30, we'll call the meeting to order. We have a quorum present. Councilwoman Tiffany did have... Councilwoman Tiffany had a family emergency, so she's unable to be here. The invocation will be led by Glenn Strather and the pledge by Councilman Schrader. If you'll please rise.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for the day. Thank you for all the opportunities you bring us each and every day. Thank you for the humbleness and the guidance that you give us strength and wisdom and you impart on our ways. Lord, continue to give us respect and honor each other and that we conduct these proceedings tonight with your guidance and your humbleness and that we respect each other. Lord, look over the folks from Oklahoma. Give them strength, especially the town and residents of Moore, you know, that got so devastated last night with the tornado. And thank God for the teachers that protected the kids and saved many, many lives. Thank you for the first responders that were there that, again, saved numerous lives in accident and protect us both here locally and across the nation. And thank you for our freedom protectors, our men and women of our armed forces throughout the United States and throughout the world that protect our freedom because we all know that freedom's not free. Continue to bless this town and give us strength in your guidance. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Okay. Item number one is presentation of a resolution of gratitude to Glenn Strather for recognition of his dedication and years of service on the town council. Okay. Resolution of gratitude. A resolution of the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, to recognize Glenn Strather for his service to the Town of Trophy Club. Whereas the members of town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, wish to express their sincere gratitude to council member Glenn Strather for his invaluable service to the Town of Trophy Club. And whereas council member Strather served with distinction and honor as a member of the town council for five years, one of which years council member Strather served as mayor pro tem. Two years. Whereas council member Strather's dedication and loyalty to Trophy Club and its citizens has been instrumental to the enhanced welfare, growth, and development of the Town of Trophy Club. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas hereby express their heartfelt gratitude to council member Strather for his unselfish contributions and service to the Town of Trophy Club and its citizens. Passed and approved by the town council of the Town of Trophy Club this 21st day. Which...
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2013-09 with great pleasure.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'll let you comment afterwards.
Yep.
Glenn, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Is this for your...
Wow. Thank you very much.
You can open it or wait. You choose.
Glenn, can I drink it?
We need to vote.
Okay. All right. We need to vote.
Do I still get the vote?
Yeah.
Vote on the resolution.
Okay. I'm sorry. All those in favor? Okay. Do you have any comments or would you prefer to make comments first?
It's up to you, Mayor. I mean, I've got a couple of things I wanted to say. If other members want to speak first, they can do that.
Let you lead.
Okay. I only put 20 pages together, so this won't take too long. Those of you that know me know that I usually choose my words carefully and at least the best I can and only speak when I need to, I guess. They prefer to do most of my stuff quietly and the goal is to get things done in an orderly fashion and make the best decisions for the town long term. I really want to thank the citizens, my friends and supporters for allowing me to serve y'all for, well, on council for the last five years and, I guess, a total of nine years through the Public Works Board when that was around and then through EDC and then eventually to council. Most of you are aware, we had an election and we came up 130 votes short. You know, it's certainly disappointing, but people speak with their votes and at the end of the day, Mr. Lamont and his supporters were able to get more people out than we were. It is a little disappointing when you have over 6,900 registered voters and you can only get 1,000 people to choose to vote, so. So with that said, I would encourage that everybody in the town, whether you're here tonight or watching later or whatever comes up on our website, is that to get involved, to get engaged and to exercise your right, which some describe as their duty, to vote and express your opinion. I'm a very firm believer that, you know, at the local government, this is the area that affects each of us the most. So we need to be involved and engaged on what's going on in our town because there are decisions made by, in our town, two governing bodies that affect us all. So it's... That's what rose me to get started this in the first place is I thought I could be able to help to give a little bit of expertise that I have in the fields of what I do to be able to bring guidance and hopefully consensus to our town and that we can make good decisions in that process. I always believed that we're blessed to be a blessing and to be a blessing is to serve and to give back. And to do that, like I said, I've done that to the town, you know, through the Public Works, EDC, and the council. I'm very proud of the team that we have here on council. We're focused. We can come to a consensus. There's a great respect for each other. We may not always agree, but we will discuss that in earnest and discuss that respectfully and then come to a decision. And once that decision's done and voted on, then as Councilman Mayor says, we move on. And that's, I think, is a great motto for our town to work towards is that what's happened is happened and we make the best decisions that we can as a town, both short term and for the long term, and move and hopefully move our town forward with that process. So I want, again, challenge our citizens to get involved. I mean, it's easy to sit on the sidelines and make a comment here or there, but if you're passionate about this town, we have numerous boards and commissions that you can get involved in. The town needs that help. We have a lot of expertise in this town, but it's a struggle at times. And when you go look around, unfortunately, it's what happens too often is that you get this bickering that comes around and you have good people that would mind serving, but when you're challenged like that, you can go look back and just say, why should I do this? Why should I give the little bit of time that I have to an entity if I'm just going to get run over? I mean, you have to have thick skin to be, and you shouldn't have to be, to serve on a council or a board or a commission. And again, I'll encourage everybody to, like I said, get involved, but also do your own research, you know? Thank goodness for April, you know? She's, with the help of our consultants, we have a great new website up here, tremendous amount of information on there, and our own town blogs. If you've got a question, you have a meaning method to go put it out there and you can get an answer and be able to get all the facts versus just bits and pieces and making your opinion from that process. Because what happens as a council, I mean, councils have to make and boards, our board have to make tough decisions. Most of them not easy. But the decisions have to be made, so after you carefully view all the facts and the goal is to make that best decision for the town, both short term and long term, and to be able to move forward. Something else, you know, that we need to work on, in my opinion, is that we need to work for a unity and we need to bring the town together. Too often, we have few people out there that, in my opinion, drive wedges and want to separate the town. And they may have an opinion out there that's worthy, but there's, in my, again, in my expression of that is there's always more than one way to present that. You can present it in a positive way or you can present it in a negative way. And if you can present it in a positive way and work towards a solution versus being part of, instead of being part of the problem, then we're all better off. We get less emotions involved and we get the job done. And like I said, if you've got an opinion and that can help the town to make a better decision, by all means, bring it forward and let's have that forward. But those that have chose to do this in the past, we, again, just need to be careful and think back and reflect to now, what only does that do, not just short term, but long term, to our town and to our citizens and where do we go from there? We have a great town. We've got a tremendous amount of young folks coming in here that they have different needs, different desires, different wants. And we have to be able, as a town, be able to take that and work with that and, again, come out with the best needs for all the citizens of the town. And you couple that with a small town with not a lot of resources, it's a challenge. So, but, like I said, I'm excited to have that on board and to be able to make that work. I mentioned earlier is that we have two government bodies. We have the town governments and we also have the mud. The mud's budget is not that much smaller than town's. They're in the process of making some pretty major decisions on the future of our town and how we are going to possibly expand our water and wastewater systems. If y'all recall, a few years ago, I mean, we had a somewhat controversial park bond that was around $5 million. We had a lot of supporters. We had a lot of people that didn't. End result, the voters, it went to the voters, it passed, and we have a great Indy Park along with other great park improvements. Well, the mud is working towards plan improvements that, in preliminary analysis, could be as low as $5 million, could be as upwards as $15 million of improvements. At full buildout, when we go to 28, you know, if they go to full buildout, considering Solana and the expansion of Solana to, again, what I saw in the report, that's will be the service equivalent around 28,000 people. So we need to ask a lot of questions if we're going to take on that type of debt and resources. So again, I encourage everybody to get involved, ask questions, so we can make the best decisions forward for the town. You know, I mentioned, you know, our budgets and a little bit and you take, and many people don't know this, but the mud department funds the fire department, the town funds the EMS. But you take both of those budgets together, that's the largest single budget item that we have as a town, followed by the police department, followed by the parks and rec department. You add all those up and that's a substantial piece of the overall town's budgets. So we need to look, how do you look at that and is there a method to go to strategic partnerships to work together to possibly improve that process? And how I look at that is not an outsource or that, it's a partnership of how two entities can come together and provide a better service for less costs. And if you can do that, like I said, improve service, less costs, then it's probably looked into so you can be able to do other things with that money. Challenges ahead. I mentioned, we always, the council and the mud board have tough decisions. The goal, in my opinion, has always been to make good, sound decisions that not only benefit the short term, but the long term. I also want to thank our staff. And the town manager, assistant town manager, have done an awesome job behind the scenes building pieces. We have, in my opinion, one of the hardest working staffs and we're very fortunate. People just kill themselves to get things done. Poor Carolyn, hopefully she's not back there still working, but my guess she probably is. But we're, again, blessed with all this development, but they're pushing themselves awful hard and we need to be very thankful as citizens that we've got such a great, great staff. They take a tremendous amount of pride in their work. And so let's treat them, you know, with the respect and duty and appreciation that they all do. And lastly, now, I want to congratulate Mr. Lamont. Good race. Well done. Good luck. And with that, you know, as a newly elected official, I'll also challenge you that, you know, you are now, I want to say one of us or one of I won't be, you're going to be held to a higher standard. And you, because now you're empowered with the trust of our town. And so please help, you know, work with your fellow councilmen's and let's continue to lead this town forward and keep Trophy Club a great place to call home. Thank you.
I think I can do this short. Glenn, it's been a real honor, a pleasure to serve with you on the council. You have an outstanding skill set. You demonstrate that at every council meeting. I and I think all the residents greatly appreciate that. You will be missed, but don't make yourself a stranger. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Glenn, I'll keep mine short as well. One of the biggest compliments I can give anybody, first off, is I respect you tremendously. Although I'll only be on the council with you for one year, you show me how to act and behave as a councilman by showing everybody respect and being honest and open to everybody. And I wanted to follow in that, you know, lead and I appreciate you being that way of a mentor to me for my one year so far on council. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome and good luck.
Serving with Glenn this past year's been a pleasure. I found out early on there are two things that Glenn loves a lot. One is the Town of Trophy Club and the other's golf. The best description I've heard of Glenn was from a supporter who said that he is a true Texas gentleman. And I think that pretty much sums up Glenn in my mind. It's, I will miss you. I'll miss you here. And to Mr. Lamont, I was out of town when the election on Saturday. We were up in Oklahoma. My daughter was graduating from college. When I got back, I sent Mr. Lamont an email congratulating him on his victory and looking forward to working with him on common problems in the town. And good luck to you, Glenn. You'll be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know if Jeanette could be here, she would reiterate a lot of what's been said, but I want to say a special thank you for the support you've given me and for the way you've worked. I feel so strongly about two things, working together with respect and long-term planning and strategy, and I think you've been absolutely crucial in both cases. I think that, I wasn't sure when we started how that was going to go, but you've really shown me what, how it can really be. And I think that we've built a great team and I will miss you. I appreciate all the things you've done with the long-term strategy with the EDC and with really bringing a balance and a level of knowledge that many of us don't have. It brings a great balance to the council and I thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
My turn.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Oh, wait a second. You have, we have, I'm sorry.
Oh, I have to canvas the vote?
We have to canvas the vote. Sorry.
One more action.
One more thing. Okay. Item number three. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Mr. Sanders.
I just wanted to say, Glenn, thank you for your years of service to this town. Very much appreciated the time we served on council together and the time you've dedicated. I know a lot of hours spent and I appreciate it very much, all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Okay. We don't have, that's it, right? Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item number three. Consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance canvassing the returns of the May 11, 2013, general and special elections relative to the election of one council member to place five on the Trophy Club Town Council. A proposition for the abolition of the Trophy Club 4A Economic Development Corporation Local Sales and Use Tax, a proposition for the creation of the Trophy Club Crime Control and Prevention District, and the levy of a one-fourth of 1% local sales tax and use tax, and 19 propositions to amend the town's Home Rule Charter authorizing the issuance of a certificate of election and providing for the enactment of propositions and providing an effective date. Okay. So the item is to consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance adopting and putting the 2013 Home Rule Charter amendments into effect. So do I have a motion?
Do I need to do those one at a time?
Yeah, I think so. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2013-12, canvassing the returns.
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Do you want to do the second one?
And the second one, I move to approve ordinance 2013-15, putting the charter amendment propositions into effect.
Second.
All those in favor? Patricia, would you please look at that? I think that 3A and 4 are the same thing.
They are. I think it's just posted twice.
Okay.
We just need it once.
Okay. And we've done it. Thank you. All right. Item five, the oath of office to be administered by municipal court judge Mark Chambers and presentation of certificate of election from Judge Chambers to incoming council member.
Mayor, as former council member Strather leaves the dais, I think we owe him a round of applause.
Lamont? Congratulations again. Mayor and council, thank you again for the privilege of allowing me this honor to swear on the new council member. I'd never take it for granted and always greatly appreciate it. All right? If you will raise your right hand, please, and signify your acceptance by saying I do at the end of the oath, please. I, Greg Lamont, do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or valuable thing or promised any public office or employment as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation thereof, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you. And now for the oath of office. Can you repeat after me, please? I, Greg Lamont...
I, Greg Lamont...
...do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear and affirm...
...that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute...
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
...of Town Council Place Five...
Of Town Council Place Five...
...of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas...
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
...preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
...the Constitution and the laws of the United States...
The Constitution and the laws of the United States...
...and of this state...
And of this state...
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Lamont?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Item, no. Okay. Congratulations. Show her your hand down there. That's okay. All right. Item number six is remarks to and from incoming council member Greg Lamont. Greg, would you like to?
Please, thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, whether you voted for me or for Glenn. It shows a deep respect for the process and our system of government. Please allow me to introduce the members of my family who are here with me tonight. Please welcome my daughter Lori, my son-in-law Jerry, and my two grandsons, Michael and Christopher. My daughter Carol lives back east and is here in spirit. I am very proud and very lucky. My children have grown up to be good citizens of their community and that applies to my grandsons as well. They are two of the finest young gentlemen you'll ever meet. It is standard operating procedure to thank one's spouse, but in this case, it is truly special. My wife Janet knew that those that practice the politics of personal destruction, how they operate, and allowed me to run to represent the residents of this town. That was no easy decision. What is lost is that candidates alike Joe Palooka dolls, for those old enough to know who that is. It's a doll, you smack it down, it gets right back up. They have to. They get right back into the game. But it is the families that hear it and have to live with it and keep it all in. To my wife, I thank you for allowing me to do this. You are truly, truly special. Now it's to the sunglasses. Janet had eye surgery that was scheduled six weeks ago. And Madam Mayor, Mr. Sly, if you think you got grief for changing the ceremony date to tonight, it pales in consideration to the grief I got when I got home from our meeting and I got, you do realize that is the day of my surgery. I want to thank the voters, especially the members of the RUTC, Residents United for Trophy Club, and those who helped in their campaign. We stay true to the cause and we will continue to do so. I'm grateful to all the residents that supported me. My intent is to work on behalf of all taxpayers and the residents to help deliver services, infrastructure projects, and amenities in the most cost-effective and efficient manner possible. possible. As we near build out, we need to reassure the residents that we will do everything possible to protect and increase their property values. We need to begin the planning for controllable budgets that match the yearly revenues that we generate. We, as a town, know who we are. We are a bedroom community. We do not have to rebrand ourselves. I'd like to talk about CFAB. That's an acronym for Citizens Financial Advisory Board. As most of you know, I believe in oversight and financial accountability. We were told during the campaign that we always have a financial board to handle oversight and accountability, which is CFAB. I encourage this council that claims it believes in CFAB to allow CFAB to implement its fiduciary oversight of the town budget. That ability is clearly spelled out in the CFAB ordinance. CFAB should begin with this year's budget. We were told during the election that staff does not want people looking over their shoulders. We will lose good people, they will quit. I refuse to believe that. Whether it is in government or in the private sector, everyone is accountable and no one is irreplaceable. Steve Jobs is dead and my iPhone still works. I would like to say a word about my good friend Glenn Strother. Glenn and I go back to his first run for the council. We were referred to as one of the, or the two of the senile seven. It's a private joke. He understands. Glenn is a good person and a decent person. Please do not judge him by the individuals who ran his campaign. I thank you for your time on the council. Just one more thing, finally. Let me assure each and every one of you who supported me and voted for me, I will not, I will not drink the Kool-Aid. Thank you.
Well, that's a hard one to follow. Well, Greg, as you've said, the voters have spoken and the time will validate the wisdom of that decision and we'll see where that one goes and I look forward to it. We hold up a vision here. The Trophy Club is a great place to call home. To the extent that you support that vision, I welcome you to council. Our adopted mission is to be a great place to call home through dedicated innovative leadership while providing superior municipal services and facilities in a highly effective and efficient manner. To the extent you support that vision, I welcome you to council. That mission is supported by five legacy priorities. First and foremost, Trophy Club must be safe and secure. Trophy Club will be business-friendly for economic development. Trophy Club will have strong partnerships and community involvement. Trophy Club will be healthy, picturesque, and environmentally sound. And Trophy Club will have a strong financial and operational stewardship. To the extent that you support those five legacy priorities, I welcome you to council. Going beyond the vision, mission, and legacy priorities, the council and town staff have agreed to core values. First and foremost, and they're all on that little strategy map over there, is integrity and trust, followed by accountability, teamwork, innovation, and finally, pride and service commitment. To the extent you support those core values, I welcome you to council. Greg, Trophy Club's a great place to call home. The voters have given you a great opportunity to write a new chapter in your book of life. To the extent that it is bound with truth, honesty, and personal integrity, it will be a great success for you and for the town. Greg, I welcome you to Town Council. Seriously.
So, if somebody said, describe Greg Lamont in one word for me, it would be passionate. I don't think anybody can deny Greg's passion for the town Trophy Club. And I'm excited to see that passion being brought to the Town Council. I think it'll energize us and, and move us forward. The other thing I'll say is, as a personal note, I appreciate all the insight you've given me as a resident of Trophy Club in my two-plus years. The information you bring and the insight you've given me has been valuable, so I welcome you to the council and continue with that.
I wouldn't be in politics and Trophy Club were it not for Greg. We agree on a lot of things, a lot of things we don't agree on, but that's politics. But I do welcome him to council. And like I say, I congratulated him as, as soon as I got back to town and I look forward to what the next, at least two years I'll be here, brings and we were going to keep Trophy Club a great place to call home.
Is there a way of raising the chair?
Hey Danny, Danny? Danny, I think we locked that one down.
Yeah. We may need a phone call.
Okay. Well, Greg, I have to tell you, I admire your fortitude and I, and I think some of your comments, particularly about the, the cost of the political arena here is, is very valid. And for everyone, for the families, I totally get that many of you interacted with my own family, so I can appreciate it. But I do appreciate the, how much you care about things and the willingness to step up because it is very easy for people to say things, but it's the stepping up that really makes it this town work. And I promise you, you don't have to drink anything you don't want. However, we do operate the council with integrity and respect. We don't have to agree, but we treat each other with respect and the citizens, and I consider that to be prime. And work on our strategy, so welcome.
Thank you.
To the council. Okay. We have a couple of other items, but I thought what we would do at the moment, we have a couple of items being council meeting dates and the mayor pro tem, but I thought perhaps we would take just a few minutes break, in case anybody wanted to, if you want to take pictures or, everybody's more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but usually people are here for this part of it. So, we're going to take a break for about five minutes.
We're going to do.
No, when she's back. So, we'll take a break for about five or 10 minutes and then we'll get back and talk about the calendar.
While we're in break, can I?
Only going to do one meeting in July.
Yeah, that's what we've done with last one.
Okay. Call the meeting back to order at, well, we don't need, we just said call it back to order, right?
Yeah, just break, yeah.
Okay. The next item, number seven, is a discussion of proposed council meeting dates for the month of June through September. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I have included in your packet, June, July, August, and September. And Greg, do we have a hard copy for Greg? Well, I'll. Here's, what we're asking you to consider is, these are the proposed meeting dates that we know that we have out there. And I know that we may have some conflict with summer vacations and that kind of thing. Generally speaking, I don't want to, you know, put, put words in the council's mouth, but generally speaking, in the month of July, because of the July 4th holiday, generally falling on the first Monday of, of the, of the month, we typically meet only once in July, so we've kind of tentatively scheduled that. I just ask you to kind of take a look through those four months and if there is conflict, I can point to some very important meetings that I would hope that we'd have all the council available for. Yes, sir?
I'll be out of town the 17th of June. Okay. If we can move that down, if it doesn't conflict with anybody else, if we can move that down to the 24th, that also takes us almost into July, which would give us a late June and one meeting in July, but I will be out, I'll be on vacation.
Mayor, I know you had some, some plans in June as well. Is that same timeframe or?
Well, I need to, to go down and be with my dad. And if we moved it to the 24th, actually, that would be better for me. I would be here on the 17th, but if I don't have to be, that's better. So, I think I have to look.
And you're, you're calendared for this discussion, so you can take some action to move those dates. Obviously, we need to kind of lock them in, so we're, we're prepared and have our council packets out appropriately and that kind of thing. So, what you're suggesting is meet the 3rd and the 24th of June?
Everything else is fine. That's the only date that I, I personally have a conflict with.
Does anybody else have a conflict with the 24th of June? Not else, does anybody have a conflict with the 24th of June? Do you?
I have no idea.
This was on the agenda.
I know. I figure you can get by one meeting without me.
Well, these are kind of important meetings here.
Well.
Well, in June, we're still early enough.
That's not a budget meeting, it's just, I knew that there was some, some conflicts moving forward through June, so I included it. The day that I'm, I'm really pointing to and I'm hoping I can get you to point to your calendar and make sure that you have it locked in, is Friday, the 2nd of August.
Friday, the 2nd of August.
Friday, the 2nd of August is when we intend to present the budget and have the, the full-blown budget workshop with all the department directors and that kind of thing. I need you to put that on your calendar, because it's very important that we have a full council for that particular meeting.
Friday's like, August 2nd.
August the 2nd.
At 1:00 PM.
It's a Friday afternoon and we generally will, will feed you that evening and go until we have to. We're going to get through all of that. And that'll be your first real look at the town manager's supplemental for the budget.
Does anybody have an issue with the 2nd of August at 1:00? From 1 until?
Right.
That's a Friday.
No, well, it's Friday 11th, so you have to cater lunch, but that's okay.
Well, we being cheap like we are, we did that by design. All right, so you, you're good with June and July? And then the, the rest of the meeting dates are pretty much as scheduled. We'll generally have three meetings in September, leading up to the budget passage on, scheduled currently on the 23rd of September.
So, we're only having one in July?
One meeting in July. And we'll make up for that in September when we meet three.
So, in September, we're looking at the 3rd? The 9th and 23rd?
Yes.
Last day to adopt the budget?
30th.
Is the 30th?
Yes. That gives us a week and if we can't get the budget adopted on the 23rd, we can still react and make whatever.
September 2nd?
Okay, do we need a motion on this?
Well, just one sec. I'm just, just checking the September dates. Actually, that, that's me too, because the 16th is the day I really did my last discussion. That's what we're posted for.
I'm going to have to make a business trip in September, but I'll try to schedule for that week of the 16th.
Yeah, we don't really need action. Okay. I don't have anything down here, so. Okay.
I make a motion, Mayor, that.
Let me stop you. We're only posted for discussion. Is discussion, not for action.
I'll bring it, I'll bring it back at the next council meeting.
But we can speak back on the consent.
Consent, yeah. We just put it on a consent.
Okay, so, the, where we are, though, in discussion, is the only change to the calendar you've put forward here is moving the June meeting, the second meeting, to the 24th.
Yes, ma'am.
You're making me a hero among my family, that's a good thing.
We try to please.
Okay. Okay. The next item is to consider and take appropriate action regarding the appointment of mayor pro tem for a term of one year. We also have, in that, to convene into executive session where we can discuss that item?
I don't, do we, I don't see that we need to. Do you think we need to?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jeanette Tiffany for mayor pro tem.
Okay.
Nominations don't require.
Okay. Okay, we have a nomination for Jeanette Tiffany. Is there any other? All in favor? Okay, we're good.
You always vote for the person that's absent.
That's right, yes. You snooze, you lose, Jeanette.
Okay. So, then we didn't have to go into executive session and therefore we'd have to discuss it, so.
Mayor, if I, if I can, I would just like to pass to Councilman Lamont. Jeanette, I think I'm the only one she was able to call today. She's with her mom and Abilene and really wanted to be here tonight and wanted me to express that to you. This is, she would ordinarily be here and family circumstances don't, don't allow for that, so I told her I would, I would pass that along. And while I have your attention, I'll be in Austin Thursday this week.
Thursday this week?
Yes.
You know, talking about council meeting dates, are you going to schedule any other meeting in here? Are we going to try and schedule another meeting?
I'm drawing a blank.
Workshop, retreat?
Oh. I'll be, I'll be reaching out to the council.
Okay, good. Okay. If there is nothing else.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned at 7:35.